...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
...for the audience that watches our meeting, you two are on the table. The background looks a little different today because we are in the depot. We're going to hold our meeting tonight in the depot to bring awareness to what artifacts are in here, the history of Beecher, to bring attention to the depot, which a lot of volunteers have done a lot of work to bring this to what it is today. I'd like to thank the volunteers for today for being here, for hosting this for us. We appreciate that very much. And why don't you guys stand up for a minute? Don, all of you stand up. Thank you. And we'll call.
Eric, 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 Mike, Eric, Chris, Coleman, Wayne.
Thank you.
Like a couple meetings ago, I'd like to show you what we know transpired today with the golf course, which I'm sure some of you are here. Friday, we had someone call the village hall and ask if we had heard anything or knew anything of what happened with the golf course. At that time, we did not. I sent out an email to the bank asking them what was going on. I did not hear from them back from them until today. This morning, in between now and then, the rumors did start applying that the golf course was closed and was not going to reopen this season. As of this morning, I confirmed that with the bank. They are not opening the golf course this season. And as far as what plans they are in the future, they don't know. Obviously, they intend to market the property. Don't know, or I should say, they have said that obviously the marketing of the golf course as a golf course in the past has not worked. So I don't know what they are planning on doing in the future. We did discuss the maintenance of the vacant property. We did discuss the maintenance of the ponds. And right now, I wish I could tell you anything about those ponds or that property. I don't have the answers yet. That's really all I know. The last conversation we had with the bank was prior to the end of the year. I do, some of you were here where there were rumors going around about a development. There is still no development to our knowledge. We have not been contacted by anyone since that last meeting about the golf course whatsoever. And again, I assure you that if there would be any contact, anything going on with the golf course, we would certainly let the residents know. And once again, I still think we are standing behind the opinion that we gave at the last board meeting when this topic come up. We are trying our best to keep it at the very least open space. It's zoned that way. We keep it that way. We promise you that way. But there are always unforeseen things in the future. With that, I will put it up to questions from the audience.
You have an ordinance for grass being so tall, so how is that going to work out?
The problem we have is that it's zoned open space. Call it green space, call it whatever you want. With that, it's not zoned residential, therefore, there is no requirement to keep it cut beneath that eight inches. So it can grow with its periperyth. Now, again, we have, in fact, I've sent the email back to the gentleman I'm talking to with the bank today, expressing our concerns because a resident did call us and he's offering, or the homeowners associations are offering, or whatever the case may be, of getting a group together and possibly cutting some of the land around the homes. But we have to be careful, number one. It's not our property, it's private property. And if in fact we get to that, we got a little bit of time, you know, before the snow melts, before the grass starts to grow. And he said he would explore that. The gentleman I talked to said he felt that that would be important to cut the grass. I personally feel it would be important to cut the grass because once you let it go, then for sure, there's no chance of it ever coming back as a golf course. If at least they cut it, is there a possibility it could come back? I think so, but I'm not a, you know, I'm not a golf course maintenance person. So they would not be required to cut it, but we are trying to encourage them to maintain it at least as it is. It may end up like some of us do at our own homes where we have dry pond behind it. We may have to cut 25 feet just to keep the, you know, the grass back away from our homes. It's basically in the works. Again, this just happened this morning. Was there a control? Yes, ma'am.
If the ponds are aerated or chemicals are put in, this green sludge comes all over. That's an environmental protection agency type deal, isn't it?
I don't know specifically if it would be.
The skid is breeding, et cetera.
We did, yeah, I'm sorry. We did talk about the ponds this morning. We know that the two ponds that were aerated.
Yes.
Some, especially one near your homes.
Right.
We talked about in the past, which we succeeded to get something done in the past. We don't want to let that go. We are going to ask them to at the very least put the aeration in the ponds. Okay? And then we will keep an eye on it as well. You keep an eye on it as well. If it looks like it's going to turn a little bad, please let us know and we'll try and get on it and we'll try and have something done about it. Thank you.
One more question. Since there will not be any activity back there, what about police protection? How, or you probably haven't even thought of that, but you know, it's...
Truthfully, we did think of that.
Oh, you did? Cool.
We thought of that if, if we would take over, you know, the golf course at one time. We've talked about police protection. As of today, truthfully, I haven't even had a chance to talk with them about it. Maybe the chief can discuss that now or maybe trustee Coleman can.
Police protection as far as what? What, do you have anything specific?
Well, we feel that if it's abandoned, it's going to become an attractive nuisance. That open space like that is going to attract kids, whatever, and not just from Beecher.
It's been happening before.
Yeah.
Right.
From all over the area. You're going to have kids coming in there and the problem's going to be twofold. There's going to be potential illegal activity, well, threefold. Illegal activity, a danger of a kid falling into a pond if there's still ponds, and lastly, I think an enhanced danger of break-ins to the properties that are contiguous to the golf course.
That's pitch black.
Yeah.
Like all our homes back there.
At least in the summertime, you know, when there's golfers out there, there's a certain emoticon of protection with a population out there. But if it becomes abandoned, it's going to just be open season on all of the homes that are contiguous to the golf course. And mind you, that's, it's a potential. It's going to become an attractive nuisance, there's no doubt about that.
Okay, we can discuss that and we'll see what we can do.
Well, I would suggest that, you know, you bring that up with the bank because it's a concern, I think, as equally as the condition of the ponds and the grass. And I will tell you, for the folks that I've talked to in the golf business, if the greens go unmaintained for one year, they're gone forever. You start from square one.
Yeah.
Down from the sand up. So, you know, if it goes one year, it's not going to be a golf course again.
Yeah, that was the special we had this morning. So we're very much aware of that. And I, again, assure you that we're going to do everything we can, try and do what we can. And like I said, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I think the board and I and staff are very disappointed that we haven't acknowledged this is coming. The last we heard was, again, prior to the first of the year or right after that, we heard the golf course was going to open, but it was going over late, which we understood because of the weather, because there's no golfers in the beginning, the ground is soggy, and it made sense. That was the last conversation or rumor we heard. And since that time, and we were just as surprised as everybody else that Friday, let's say the first word we heard was a resident.
Well, forgive me for saying so, but you know, it loses hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, so who can be surprised if it's not going to open?
Don't disagree with you.
Pardon me?
But again, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, sir.
Again, if we had no inkling, I'm disappointed that we didn't have to get a phone call saying this is what we're going to do because we've had dialogue with them for at the very least two years, as long as I've been there. And I know there has been dialogue prior in previous administration with that golf course.
And presumably, you've had discussions with the bank about the existence of the PUD that insists that nothing can be done until 2021 in terms of the alteration of the open space provisions.
Without a doubt. And we've also explained to them, even without that plan, even the development, without that agreement, it is still zoned open space. And it's all right.
Are your two vacant lots still accessible or current package with Strikers and Buddies?
There's three.
Or three vacant lots?
Strikers has the lot to the north of it that was purchased with the new owner. The lot to the south of Buddies, which is, I believe, is the one that you're talking about, was purchased with the same owner from Buddies.
There's also a lot just north of Fairway Drive. I believe that's where the...
There's a lot at Fairway Drive. Truthfully, that lot hasn't come up in any, again.
How long they zoned? Commercial?
Yeah, they should.
Yes.
They're commercial, huh?
Yes.
And as far as the property, the buildings, whether the golf course is open and closed, the police department routinely does security checks of the building. We actually do a physical check. We check the doors. We check the old buildings. We look for break-ins. That's something that's done year round.
Do you remember what happened to the mausoleum when that was vacated? I mean, they had all these parties there and everything. Well, I think there was an issue too in the back of the golf course where they had, where they had those mounds of dirt or where they put their rubbish, huh?
The dump area.
Yeah, there were kids, you know, doing stuff there too. So, in my experience, that's what I've heard in the past seven years.
And it's something, the details, we have to work out with the bank.
Okay, cool.
On that.
Good.
What if it's posted, no trespassing, chief? That means for anybody, not kids, but anybody.
Oh, that would be for anybody. It's what, if the bank says no trespassing, it means anybody.
All right. So what do we do if we see something? Like I am, I'm eighth center. Well, I was eighth center, but I can see, tell us, what if you see, just call the cops?
Well, and this is something new because we haven't gone down this road before and until we venture in, because as law enforcement and being that's private property, we don't have the authorization to escort people or remove somebody from property that isn't ours. That's got to come at the request of the owner of the property.
And absent blatant illegal activity, you would certainly be able to...
If it was illegal activity, that's something different, yes. If someone's out there smoking dope or underage drinking, call us, we can take action.
Yeah, I was seeing, how could you see 100 miles, you know?
And not, and I don't think that's going on, not that it couldn't.
No.
If people know things are vacant.
Yeah.
But hopefully, the bank will have people that are going to routinely check on the property. I mean, that's worth something to them. I can't see them just letting it go.
I was quoted 191 acres, one.
191 acres?
Yeah.
What's the asking price?
I don't know. I'm, I'm going to guess between 500,000 to 1 million. That's, I don't know for that for sure. But again, I had asked that question today. Actually, I had asked what the property appraised at today because we knew it was being appraised by someone. Don't know for what for. I assume it was the bank. And that appraisal has not, well, I know it was the bank now because they said the appraisal hasn't come back yet, so I can't answer it right now.
How do we keep up to date besides coming to the meetings?
If you, we have access to the internet.
Oh, that's all I can hear.
Okay, our website. Actually, this morning, I posted what I know of the golf course in brief. And then I also posted about the local government distributive fund that Governor Roner is threatening to rob from us. I posted a brief there. And a lot of mine is as information is coming forth, I'll either announce it like I did at the meeting tonight, I'll post it on the website, and possibly the newsletter down the road. So, and truthfully, anybody else? Why don't you just call the village hall, ask for me or ask for Bob, and explain to me what we know it's for. If you're more than happy to answer questions, and if you know any trustees in the room, they'll be happy to answer any questions that you have because I try to keep them just informed as much as I know up to date. That's all I can, all I can say is just hope, hope and pray that this works out down the road, if you want to, and we'll continue fighting.
I don't know.
Okay, anybody else?
If anyone wants to buy it, that'd be a good thing.
Anybody else in the audience wish to report? If that reports, it'll village commission, certification first, uh, commission first.
Uh, can I really get another glass?
Sorry?
Yeah, bits are going out for the 2015, we have to meet for it. And there's plenty of one of them that's already going to speak on the leadership very well. We'll move along with that.
Thank you. You, commission, trust me first.
Last Saturday night, we had our mom's Sundance. We had approximately 225 people attend. Our next event is April, over spring break, it's going to be a roller skating event there.
Reverend Hope, trustee Miller.
No report as of now.
Historic preservation, trustee Miller.
Um, no report as of now. Hopefully, in the near future.
Trustee Clary.
Uh, Kim, treasurer's report. Okay, I can make my report pretty brief, pretty much eventful month of February. We showed about the account balance, it was totally declining 94,000, but that was chiefly a check clearing on central, so really it was a pretty minor activity month. You know, we're in the non-tax season, so really it's just a village expense that's going against a lesser revenue base. We're in the decline period, which is to be expected. The commission, nothing to report there because you can see the balance is basically unchanged. You've commissioned some activity with your dances and whatnot for the things there, but otherwise, not much there. Well, if you look at the graphical presentation, it's the year-over-year balances of the numbers that are there. So the village accounts are 1.5 versus the 1.6 of previous, a year, a year ago. In general, essentially unchanged, 442 versus 455 today, so, you know, to go through there. And then our commission bills, not a lot of them last month, 169,000 in total, is chiefly your payrolls and your joint fuel. Once you've got a small amount of your youth activity here, so, like I said, a pretty flat month, only nothing more. So, that's really all I have.
Any questions to the other treasurers? I make a motion approving the treasures report for the prior month.
Second. It's a motion under form, there was a second. Any questions or discussion? Call.
Yeah.
Eric, Mike, yes.
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 The variances were also included in our packet for our review. The bills were provided to us via email and also are in front of us, both shown in bold, our bills that were added. There was one bill that I held from signature for the fact, normally our bills come in after, or we're paying off these after we expensed the charge. And so the one on the eighth page, which is Staveridge Suites, it's for the superintendent to go to the IRWA conference. Want to give more details on that one? Normally, we write the check to the bill.
Oh, no.
Right now, it's not going to take place until April?
March.
No, March 23rd. So...
No, because I just wrote it down with me, A to red and then 23 years in clerk.
So that's why they're showing us bold. It wasn't, I did not approve that. Forgot that information. Any questions of the bills?
I think you had another question about ATS bill.
Yes, yes.
Just to bring you up to speed, the reason we didn't pay it last month was because they did not provide us with the report. That morning, when Bob and I had went through the bills, I called them, I called their office, and we had just received, I had to actually tell them or ask them to send over a copy of the report, which we received February 23rd, which you should have gotten a copy of, an email of. Their work is done, it's too impressive, but everything is there, they looked up to and what they said they were going to do.
Have you reviewed the report to make sure it's complete?
That's, for what they did, you know, yeah, they did what they said they were going to do. But I think they, um, wasn't too impressive. Jonathan had more of discussions with their higher management than I did. I'm more of a still with the field men. Jonathan was out there a few times with me. If you'd like to comment on anything.
Well, I mean, just me and Bob called up and, you know, it was a conference call. Just expressed, you know, a lot of disappointment. We sort of set a yacht and the length it took to get the report and the length it took for the project to begin from pre-con meetings and just everything from there. And I mean, that was just about it. I mean, the whole idea, we've always used Simpson. The whole idea of it was, it's going to be a done with protection. I mean, we go into this, we know what our water loss ratio is, it's not good. We keep trying to find the answer. The water's got to be leaving the system somewhere. And somehow, it is. And so the idea was, okay, let's get a fresh set of eyes. You know, there's not many companies that are capable of doing this type of work. You know, a pretty limited selection of people that you can get, you know, quotes from and bids from. So the idea was to try somebody else. And we quickly learned that, you know, what we had, grass ain't always greener on the other side, you know? We had a good thing with Simpson, I mean, as far as, I'm not talking about what they were able to find or anything like that, but just as far as their, their follow-through and, you know, the timeliness of receiving reports and, you know, meetings and stuff like that, it's just, I would never recommend using that company again. Which is why we, at the last board meeting, we had Simpson to do the more detail of, you know...
Localized checks.
Yeah, localized checks on the service lines and give them off domains and see if that's our problem. You know, there wasn't even a thought of getting a price from this DTS, so. That's about it.
Any other questions of the bills? I make a motion approving the bills for February 2015, total of 78,979 dollars and five cents.
Second. It's a motion under form, there was a second. Any questions or discussion? Call.
Yes.
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 Eric? Yes.
Yes.
Scott, then?
Yeah, consider paying a bill?
Yeah, we have one bill. It's for the glass in the police station lobby. It's one-way glass. We have agreed that the remaining balance in the 625 Dixie account will be used for police department improvements. The village hall project is complete. There isn't enough money there to finish the major stuff that we wanted to do like the generator, but in appearance to the police, we didn't give them a penny for their... So we're going to dedicate the remaining balance to them. And this is part of that, there's 746 dollars and 30 cents for that kind of glass in the police lot. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
How much is that, Bob?
746 dollars and 30 cents. You can see with our remaining balance, I think we have 2,800 left in there.
Yeah.
Of 24. Only 400? 24. 24, so six, seven.
Just before or after we have been...
This will be, this is before, so that 746 have come off of that. And then they got to buy some paint and they got to do some spackling of the walls with furniture that was taken off the walls or something like that, cabinets.
Yeah, there's drywall work that needs to be done, also some patching of the interior, the cinder block walls need to be patched.
It's the Midwest Glass, which is a Beecher company, I believe, isn't it? An amount of 746,000. I'd like to make a motion.
The motion, there was a second. Any questions or discussion? Call.
Yes.
Eric? Yes.
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 May I have a resolution, right, trustee Clary?
The resolution has to do with Governor Roner and trying to protect the local government distribution fund, also known as the LDF. This, way the LDF is designed, it's, it uses income taxes paid by residents of the state of Illinois, and that goes into a fund. A portion of the Illinois state taxes are then allocated to the municipalities and cities based on their per capita. It's a very smaller, small amount compared to the overall income tax. Right now, the plan for Governor Roner is to remove a portion of that, and there's also a risk of them taking all of it. So it's not just, they're going to, they're only going to take 50%. They may go all. And they could do that at any time. They could do it right now. The governor could pass that rule. It makes balancing budgets almost impossible. It also directly affects us on planning for our future. We have to get our budget resolved by, and pass before May 1st. The gov, the, the state government does not need to pass Thursday until June. So it puts us kind of at a loss, not knowing what's going on. So we've been very cautious on the budgeting, but we could only plan for what we know. And right now, there's, he hasn't, he's threatened to it, but he's not made the motion to take it. Prior governors have also done the same thing. Governor Roner's probably a little more aggressive. If he goes with a full removal, it's an estimated loss to the village of Beechtree, 215,770 dollars and 50 cents. So the idea of the resolution is to have the, have our village president literally urge the governor and the general assembly to protect the full funding of the LGDF so that we then can proceed forward. So I, any questions concerning the resolution?
No, but that 215,000, that's if he takes half, or as you stated, he could take the whole thing, which would be upwards of...
No, that's full of that, 200.
No, 430 is full.
430 is full, yeah.
The 210.
The 50% that he's encouraging right now is just, is asking.
And ask for next year. And then he's also talking about Robbie, what's left for this year.
For this year. And that could be all. Yeah. That would be 100% what he wants to do for the remainder of this budget that they're currently in right now because he reduced the state income tax.
So was a hearing downtown Chicago today that could make, because of time, could make your board meeting time. We have not heard anything on that hearing today, but it's very preliminary at this point. So I wish I could provide more information about that, but right now, I don't have any more.
Any other questions? So I make a motion for a resolution number...
2015 dash one.
Urging the governor and the general assembly to protect full funding of the local government distributive fund.
Second. It's a motion under form, second. Any questions or discussion? Call.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Any new business for the board?
We'll be there later.
I'm sorry. Yeah, do that, okay. As we've been discussing the quiet zone, we went out and sought proposals of an engineering firm to do a study for us to find out factually what we could do, how much it would cost, and then we basically would put it on our list at some point in time down the road where we could have, possibly have a quiet zone. The problem was that over the number of years, we did not have factual information. We believe we have a handle on it, but still are not yet sure. So I leave it to the board to decide whether or not they at least want to do an inquiry of what we can do, how we can do it, and cost, and that at some point in time, we can decide when to do it. Certainly, I don't think we expect to put this in place of other priorities such as water mains, quality of water, and so on and so forth. But it is something I think we should take a look at for somewhere down the road. I'd like to have this ready for us for in the event that, if a miracle occurs and there is some grant waiting in the wings for us to be able to do this. Or we had thought that possibly if we closed the crossing, we could use that as ammunition to make a discussion with the railroad, that possibly they could help us with the quiet zone in the village should we close one crossing as proposed, keep doing them all open. This was being prompted by a seminar that I had gone to where there was discussion taking place about the quiet zones and where they said that it would definitely improve quality of life in Beecher, which that's why I began with the board's help for the years of trying to pursue this down the road. And I think this is probably the best thing we could do. Discussion?
I, I had one question, it was just the drastic difference in the numbers. And then the HR Green was 27.5, the other one was not to exceed 20,000, and then the other one was 18,000. Was it, I just saw it. It's somewhere between...
It ran figures.
Yeah, you had two around 20 and one around 3,000. Yeah, you had two around twenty and one around three thousand. And then we're supposed to compare, you know, this has come up before. We're comparing apples here.
I, I had the same question. I asked Bob that, no one answered.
Yeah, I believe the other two would give you a full-blown package. In other words, they do a full detailed analysis of the crossings. Basically, it would be an application tomorrow. That's not what we're looking for. The HR green proposal is a, is a two, two or three-page proposal, but it hits every point that we asked for an RFP. So they're just going to put together a letter and arrange estimated costs of what we take to bring the quiet zone to Beecher, and I think that's all we need. I would be loving a depth analysis, to be honest with you. It's true, preliminary, if I spend twenty grand, then you can spend twenty-seven hundred, I'll get it done. Get it done.
Have you gone back to the other Indian firms to have them go back to that same point? Bring them back to your expectations? Maybe they missed it. Have we gone back?
I've talked to them continuously through the process, Brian. They're professionals. I think HR green understood what we wanted. The other two aren't as sure.
In fact, I was even involved in one of the conversations with one of the firms, telling them exactly what we wanted to do and how we wanted to do it. I mean, to be honest with you, if it was twenty thousand dollars, I don't think it'd be that table for discussion, right?
That's correct.
But I, and I, I had intentions on bringing it up to the finance committee for next year's budget. And Bob had indicated no, he said he'd rather be able to do it in this year's budget. So that's...
I'd have to give you money on that. True budget to do this stuff. So if you want it done, you have to do it now.
We talked about this years ago, maybe ten years ago?
Less than that.
Less than that.
We had this for, when Greg and I were in Florida first term.
Okay.
And if we're...
I was wondering how far we went at that point.
We didn't go that far. We had a guy come in and tell us what quiet zones are, what you could and couldn't do, and the thing he's probably going to have. I've said it over and over and over. People are going to be directly impacted by the grailing, being, having its connection off of Indiana. And the access of that resident on the south side of Indiana, I didn't have the crossing.
Yeah, we did our, we did our own research back then, and we had somebody come in and speak.
Right.
Since that time till, I think what has changed is that the amount of rail traffic has increased so much. Also, we started getting into a conversation with our neighbor to the north, Crete. And where he was providing information, he made it sound like it was going to be easy. He made it sound like it was going to be cheap. And then there was misinformation out there going back and forth. We think we've been able to clarify that, but still we're uncomfortable with the misinformation. So like Bob had said, all we did was, and I thought the, the proposal that we sent out was very clear. We just want to clarify the information, factually know what we can do, what needs to be done, at what crossings, at what cost. And then whether or not we can address the, the fire vehicles coming through town. Which, you know, I think I have an answer, but that's just me. It's bottom line is Indiana, it would become a three-lane. So you'd have a bigger lane coming across a turn lane versus a different...
Oh, for the graining here?
Yeah, for the fire vehicle to go across Indiana. That's just me guessing, you know. And that's what I'm trying to avoid, is avoid the guessing, get the factual information. And then bottom line is that we know that and can, somewhere in the near future, hopefully can be addressed and be, hopefully, ready to, if a grant or, or some money comes work, down the road.
The legislature was very expensive at the time.
That's because they were doing full range adjustments. It wasn't, we had brought the guy in, it was just what he could see, you're looking at, you know, he was the guy who was shooting, they had, they had no details. Didn't look at anything. It was just our explanation of what our crossings look like.
And one of the things we did find out is the, where they were getting their information from, from the federal railway administration website, we thought it might be dated, and we've been told it is dated. So there's no factual information on that website. That's where we were going wrong. Or Crete was telling us one thing, our engineers were telling us another thing. And the engineers were getting it from that website. And that's been cleared out with it. And it turns out the gentleman that maintains our leg of the railroad lives in Beecher, and Bob has had a special...
I mean, you know.
So, and again, so, you guys, it's a good idea, and I think...
I make a motion for a proposal to make a quiet zone feasibility study with HR green in an amount of twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Second.
There's a motion under four and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mary?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
The class?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Just one last, if this study comes up with that big number, that we can't quantify it, we guess.